Welcome. This meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code, Section five, four, nine, five, three subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section five, four, nine, fifty, Series Resolution Number twenty, twenty-two, one, forty-eight, and the Federal Americas with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will physically be open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID- nineteen, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Welcome to today's City Council meeting, January twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty-three. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Here.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Here.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Today, we have an invocation by Pastor Jim Tim Gianosa from Big Valley Grace. And we will be, that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Father, thank you for a, a great city, great place to be. Thank you for many men and women and families who served so faithfully to care for this place and, and the, the place that we live. Give them great wisdom as they meet, give them understanding, give them thought of, of many others all the way up and down the social ladder where they would, uh, think and be mindful of those that are in the greatest need and those who have the most. And Lord, there's a, they, they seek to, to bring resolution to different issues, to, to think about that future that they would have in mind of all that is good and right and best, and they would act with integrity and great character. And so, Father, continue to bless this place as you've had for so long. And I know you will into the future. And so, thank you, Lord, in your name, amen.
We now move on to, excuse me, presentations. There's an amendment on the agenda. The presentation listed as item A will be incorporated with new business item number thirteen. Moving on to citizens' communications.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We will need to take action on the amended agenda.
Take the action now? Okay.
There's a correction on item seven on the consent calendar, page five, section nine point two, should reference the county of Stanislaus, not county of Merced.
Well, that's not the one.
We, we just need a motion from, a motion in action on the amended agenda to incorporate the presentation with the, the action item. So, we just need a motion for that.
Make a motion.
But not that one. That one's for the contract. My apologies.
It would just be a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' communications. The City Council welcomes and encourages participation in the City Council meetings. Adopted rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution Number two thousand and seven, one oh six, for expression of non-gender items. Managed under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking any action on any matters which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. Now, we opened up for in-person comments. Anybody from the public that would like to make a comment, you step up. You step up, sir, and state your name.
John Warren, City of Series. Good evening. I noticed that there are additional monitors, and I've been pointed out that there's additional, uh, speakers in the, uh, in the room. So, it appears that some work has taken place to improve the audiovisual of the council chambers. And hopefully, uh, that will improve the, uh, ability for us as citizens to hear what's going on and to see as well. So, thank you for that. Also, a big thank you to Sam and his staff. Uh, earlier in the week, I had sent a notice, a notice, I had sent an email to the city, uh, council members, and I thought to Sam as well in regards to a big tree that was on Moffett with a limb that's hanging out over, uh, over the street. And today, I noticed when I went by that the pruning team was there, and they were diligently working on that tree. So, I spoke to Sam earlier about that and the city and Sam's department for immediate response for a, a hazard that was just waiting to happen. On January the thirteenth, I opened my mail, and that was a Friday, the day before that there was going to be a public, uh, meeting here, council chambers in regards to, um, Samara Park. And most of the folks in the city probably were not aware that that was going to take place. I knew it was going to be on January the fourteenth, and I had planned to attend. But if you were not a well-informed citizen or had been, uh, contacted by, anyway, by the city, uh, you wouldn't know that that was going to happen. And the notice clearly read that if you went to the website, that you could participate in case you weren't able to attend the meeting. But if you went to the website, all it did was give you the same picture that you got in the mail. There was no picture of what the proposed, um, design was going to be or any way for you to make a comment on that. So, i- it was really nice for the city to reach out to public and tell them that there was going to be a meeting within twelve hours of their reading the mail. If they read it Friday night when they got home from work at nine or ten o'clock or at five or whatever time they get home, or maybe they don't read it till Saturday morning, and then by the time they're reading it, the meeting's taking place, and they have no chance of making any public comment. Now, the concept is great, and it's appreciated, but maybe it should be more timely so the public does get some notice. Um, also, in that same mailing was our upcoming trash collection that's going to take place here in February. And it clearly asked the people to bring a utility bill and some ID, and it tells them that no vehicle loads larger than a pickup truck will be accepted. And they can bring as many as four or five mattresses, but they have to keep the load level with the pickup bed. How do you put four or five mattresses in a pickup truck without it hanging out over the top? You're asking people to bring their garbage and turn it in, but you're telling them when you get there with a full pickup truck that you won't accept it. And you won't accept anything except one pickup load, and you won't accept anything bigger than a pickup. So, if a guy shows up with a dump truck with a bunch of garbage in it, you're going to turn him away, and he's going to go pour it out into the orchard someplace. So, I really encourage you to reconsider. If someone shows up with bigger load than a pickup truck, please accept it. And if they don't happen to have their current city bill, take it anyway, because it's going to end up in an orchard. And the whole purpose of this is to collect garbage and junk that we don't want in our city streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anybody else that would like to speak? Z and none. Anybody on Zoom with their hands raised? I have one person with their hand raised.
We do have a hand raised. Mr. Lee, you may unmute your mic.
I see my name. Can you hear me? Hello?
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, hang on. How about now?
That's better.
Ooh, hurts my ears. Yeah, I want to agree with, uh, John Warren on the notice for the, uh, park and people, uh, coming to have input. I'm one of those individuals which, if you took a survey, there'd probably be quite a few people that got it, uh, late Friday, and, uh, I said it there and opened up Saturday morning just to notice that, I believe it was eight o'clock or so, nine o'clock in the morning, that, uh, the, the meeting was come, coming forward on that Saturday. So, yeah, this happened quite a few times in other issues, not that frequently, but it has happened in the past. And we just need to, as, uh, coordinating with the city and the citizens, we need to get the information out in a timely manner to where they have time to react. And like, uh, Mr. Warren said, you know, one day or twelve hours isn't enough time. And I believe there was just a couple of people from the city there, from what I understand. All right, thank you.
Is there any other hand raised?
There are no additional hands raised.
Have you received any emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay, so this communication is now closed. Moving on to conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest?
Come on, John.
I do have a conflict of interest with eight and nine due to proximity of my house to the kitchen.
Councilmember Vera, did you say you have a conflict with item eight and nine?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalinda. Appreciate it. Before we move into the consent calendar, going back to what, uh, Vice Mayor was referencing, there is a correction on item number seven on the consent calendar, H five, section nine point two, should reference county of Stanislaus County and not the county of Merced. That does not require a motion, correct, Nubia? Just wanted to double check before we move on.
The request will be, consent calendar approved by council will include that change to item seven?
Have to pull that item.
No, it, it won't require to pull the item. It's just the notation as the mayor has.
To make that clear so everybody knows.
That's correct.
Sounds good.
And the, um, the packet that's been posted online and presented in, in chambers has the corrected red line, um.
Not as of yet, no.
Okay, well, it, it will be. The record will reflect that it will include that change.
Okay, moving on to, to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Uh, anyone on the council that would like to put a, pull an item besides eight and nine? We're going to go ahead and pull item eight and nine. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to pull an item? Yes, sir. Twelve is not only consent item. That is not a consent item. That's under unfinished business, sir. Thank you. Other than that? Audience? Zoom?
There's no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, move for approval.
Move to approve one through seven, ten, and eleven on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Now, we'll, at this moment, Rosalinda will step out until we convene with items number eight and nine. I now open up items number eight and nine to the public. Anybody on Zoom? Bring these two items back for approval.
Move to approve eight and nine on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira. Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
If somebody could please, uh, Councilmember to come back, please. Yeah, he did. Welcome back. We will now move on to unfinished business. Item number twelve, Resolution Number twenty, twenty-three dash fourteen, authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds and neighborhood park fees for the design and construction of Ochoa Park improvements. Approve a conceptual design and approve Odell Engineering to perform the phase two design work and construction support. Kevin.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Public. I'm going to give a presentation on the Ochoa Park Phase Two improvements, and I wanted to make note that there are presentations on the back table there for you. If you'd like to, like a copy of this presentation, and we can, you can pick it up on the way out or, or just, uh, we'll wait for you if you want to get a copy now. Okay. This project is designed to, uh, go from this month until, uh, probably early summer twenty twenty-four. As you recall, in Phase One, uh, we completed, uh, several different, uh, items on the, uh, on the existing park. We, we cleared and grubbed. We did site grading. We installed landscaping, sidewalks, a playground, volleyball, and monument, and a couple other features such as a cornhole and the horseshoe pit. Next slide, please. And this is what the, uh, park looked like, uh, and, uh, on the left, it was the pre-designed, and on the right is what it currently, uh, looks like today. Phase two is, uh, provided tonight here with, uh, several design features, and let me just, uh, pick out a few. We have, uh, picnic tables, benches, receptacles, doggy pot waste stations, a couple of basketball half courts, uh, shade structures with barbecue grills, drinking fountain, pickleball courts, uh, fence, and, uh, concrete surfacing, uh, with nets and pipes, as well as the landscaping of all the grassy area and, uh, shrub and trees. And that's a full irrigation system. I have a drawing on the next slide. Uh, this is a combination of all the different features and options that we are trying to put together, and I think that we've come out, uh, oh, I'm sorry, that. Um, it looks like this is not the drawing that I wanted to have put in there. Um, I'm going to have to, uh, talk about it. I guess this is the drawing that we submitted to the workshop, and we revised a drawing to include two basketball courts and pickleball courts. Um, I'm sorry for the, uh, for the, uh, for the error here, substitution of the design. But basically, we took everything that we could from our surveys and our public workshops, and we, and we created a design that includes, uh, an additional walkway from the, uh, the corner, uh, to the northwest, as well as, uh, adding the pickleball courts and the basketball courts. I'll put that up on the website immediately, and, uh, apologize again for not having that.
Hey, Kevin, just FYI that what we have in print is correct.
Oh, good. I'm sorry. I was, the file I pulled up the wrong file. Anyway, um, back in the back room, there's, uh, handouts there. Sam, you handle it out for the people. Yeah. We're going to get somebody to pack them out. I appreciate it. I'm sorry. Um, basically, if you can look at the, uh, at the handout, you'll see the design features that, uh, I described in the second slide, or it would, it showed the different features. But basically, what we did was, we asked a lot of questions about what people wanted, and we came up with, um, I, I think, a fantastic design. I think Ochoa Park is going to be, uh, probably one of the premier parks in the city because of this. And I think that, uh, if you have any questions, uh, go ahead and look to the second to the last page, and you'll see the design there. Again, I apologize for picking the wrong file for the presentation. I don't know what happened. Anyway, that, that, that's my presentation for Ochoa Park, uh, improvements, phase two. What we're doing is we're asking that the council authorize the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds and neighborhood park fees for the design and construction of Ochoa Park improvements. Approve the conceptual design and approve the Odell Engineering, uh, proposal to perform the design work and the construction support. Any questions?
Would you like, uh, Ms. Councilmember, do you mind if I open it up to the public first?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment on item number twelve? Is there anybody? Okay, go ahead, sir.
John Warren, City of Series, um, the design and concept is fine. It's the funding that I have some questions, uh, in regards to, he's one of the ARPA Lenny. I think it was four hundred thousand dollars that was set aside for the installation of, uh, lawn and irrigation system over at the, uh, park. And, um, to this date, as far as I know, that has not been approved yet. Um, then it went to like, I believe, one million dollars of the first, uh, funding from ARPA. And then, now there's another million dollars around figures from the second funding from ARPA. And I haven't seen that presented to the council yet for any kind of approval or dividing up that five million dollars on that second funding. And we're already seeking the use of it for, uh, different projects. So, I would think that that is something that should be taken into consideration, um, before any approval or this, this particular project moves forward. I looked at this this afternoon, and, and the cost of some of the things, I understand, is astronomical. And I wonder why you would put a barbecue pit over there. There was two of them, I think, that were supposed to be, uh, from what I read in the staff notes, at approximate cost of five thousand dollars apiece. I mean, if you look around at any of our city parks today, I wouldn't cook anything on any of the barbecues that are there. I would be afraid that my food would be contaminated. Those are some of the filthiest things that I've ever seen in my life, and they should be removed and not there at all. Um, and to want to go ahead and put something like that here and spend that money, uh, that could be used for something else in the park. I mean, it's not a great deal, ten thousand bucks. Today is chump change. But when it comes to construction costs, they want to put fencing around the project at a cost of seven thousand dollars. Now, I'm assuming the fencing is just during the construction phase, and it's there to protect the property and the, the equipment and stuff that's being used. But, you know, you're spending, I think they're spending money that doesn't need to be spent. Um, and maybe I'm wrong. I'm not in the park building business, and I do know that park benches are very expensive. Um, I look at the drinking fountain. I mean, heck, who's going to drink out of a drinking fountain down there, anyway? People are going to bring bottled water. They're going to bring their Kentucky Fried Chicken to the park when they want to have a picnic. You don't need to spend eighty-five hundred dollars on a drinking fountain. And it's going to cost five thousand, five hundred dollars to run the pipeline for water to the fountain. So, these are some things that I think that need to be looked at. Maybe the concept is great, but the things that are being built there maybe don't need to, uh, to, uh, happen. And it should be taken a look at from a budget standpoint, like if you were budgeting something for your household. I mean, you probably wouldn't spend five thousand dollars for a barbecue. You can go down and get one for a hundred and eighty-nine dollars at Home Depot. Now, I know the, that won't last at a park, and I understand the process about that. But maybe spend the money on something else and let folks cook their food at home and bring it to the park. It's a immunity park. It's, it's a neighborhood park. It's not the park where you go and you walk there. You don't drive. It's, it's close to home. So, if you're taking a lunch over there, you're probably not going to cook your food there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anybody else? And over to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Yeah, bring this back to the council for comments and consideration. Rosalinda?
Thank you. Um, I, I, I was concerned about the budget as well. That was one of my indications. Um, this is the first time I saw the report, so I do have a couple of questions. I apologize. Um, I'm assuming the drinking fountain is addition to the one that's already there?
There is one there, and there'd be another one by the pickleball court.
Okay. And then the eight-foot black vinyl high fancy with gate?
That's the, around the pickleball court. You have to hold a ball in the court.
Perfect. Okay. Yeah, like I said. And then, um, and out of the plans, because I saw in the packet it said B, is there a reason why B was stood out or why that stood out compared to the other plans that might have been presented to you?
Uh, I, I thought, uh, I didn't see the B that you're talking about.
Phase two, you mean?
No, B, we, in our individual meetings, we saw three plans, A, B, and C, and we weren't all in together at the same time. I think that's how it works, is the city staff takes a recommendation from all five of us independently, and B must have been, came out on top. Is that correct?
Is that the case?
Uh, yes, that's correct. What, what we did, what, had those individual briefings with the council, uh, took the input and, uh, came up with what we, uh, what we thought is the staff would be the best option, uh, something that incorporated the comments we heard from the community, uh, the comments we heard, uh, in the survey, um, and the input we received from the council during those briefings.
Thank you for that.
That's it. Thank you.
A couple of comments and answers. Uh, Mr. Warren, we, the way the ARPA works is we discuss potentially what we would use the money for, and then when we actually go to approve the money as we wanted or trying to do tonight, then it's actually spent. We did both include, in the first phase of ARPA, ARPA and the second phase, uh, funds sufficient to finish the park, along with a bunch of other fees that are listed. The other thing was the cost of a lot of the materials, et cetera, are there, it's unavoidable. Things have to be done a certain way. You can't have a backyard barbecue, barbecue. You have to have drinking fountains. That's what they cost, and, and, um, the pipes to get it there. Odell has never done anything for us other than provide great projects, uh, in the best cost-effective manner to the city that they could do. So, this, like any other thing that they've planned for us or designed for us will be probably the most beautiful park in Stanislaus County when it's built. On that note, I'd like to move to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-three dash fourteen.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Nay. I voting no. Uh, the concept is good, and we need to have parks for our kids, and we're taking six hundred thousand dollars from the Lion Park that's just, has nothing, you know, nothing has happened to it. So, I'm, I vote no.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Vera.
I'm gonna vote yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much, Council. No, this is a long time coming.
Motion passes four one. Thank you.
Sorry about that. No, this is a long.
Just a comment. This, this has been a long time coming for the City of Series. We've gone every direction you could go for a project to get approved, whether it was money, what was getting included in it, public comment, public input. I'm pleased. This is in my district. I've kind of made this a, uh, top priority to finish this thing before my terms up. So, this might be the best day I've seen since my time on the council. So, thank you, everybody, for supporting this.
And I would like to add a comment to, to Supervisor Chance Condit. I know you're back there. I just wanted to say I appreciate you and your efforts when we first got here, the only last meeting that we had. But, uh, that kind of steamrolled this whole process. So, thank you to you as well, and also to the Ochoa family. I know that they're not here today, and I know that they, they, they were a little anxious if this was ever going to be completed. But now that we are here today, I think that we're, we're in good standing. So, once again, I appreciate everybody. Well, now, unless there's any other comments, then we will now move on. There is no public hearing. Onto new business. Item number thirteen, Resolution Number twenty, twenty-three dash fifteen, approving the Regional Service Water Supply Project Operations Agreement between SRWA, City of Turlock, and the City of Series. Sam?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I would like to introduce, uh, Robert Granberg, the General Manager of Stanislaus Regional Water Authority, to present service water The General Manager of San Slos Regional Water Authority to present Service Water Supply Project Progress Report.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Series City Council, Robert Granberg, I go by Bob, so. General Manager for the Stan Slos Regional Water Authority. And I'll present an update presented to the council, maybe a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago. But we're coming to the end of the of the the road here on this long. Many decades project that's been in the works, and so we'll walk through it. I have the. Okay, so of the today's presentation topics, I'm going to talk a little bit about the SRWA. Some of the project goals, both on local and regional basis. Tell you a little bit about the project, what it includes, how we got here, how we're paying for it. How the water is going to get from the river to the cities. And a little bit at the end about public outreach. And how you can find out more information. So the Stan Slos Regional Water Authority Joint Powers was formed in 2011. Dating back eleven, 12 years now. Modesto is part of that at the time. But between 2011, 2015, Modesto. Decided to expand the Modesto Irrigation District, the water treatment plant. And drop out of the the Joint Powers Authority here. So in 2015, well, a little bit more, so government government code 6507. Identifies the Joint Powers Authority and SRWA as a separate, separate pub, public entity apart from the cities of Series and Turlock. And the representation of the board is both. Both cities. In 2015, there was an amendment to that Joint Powers to. Provide an opportunity for Series and Turlock to take the leadership role and deliver on the project. Project goals, improve water supply quality. As you might imagine, if you're relying on groundwater, there's continuing regulatory. Requirements for the quality of that water that's delivered to to your customers. That comes with increased cost and treatment. And so this this project is a point source of. Taking a surface water, treating it at one point and delivering it out to the cities. So all of that quality is being assured at that one water treatment plant. There are environmental goals, benefits to the river. Part of the SRWA in partnership with the Turlock Irrigation District is they're supplying the water to the project. So they'll be on demand, they'll be releasing water from Don Pedro, and it'll flow down the river about 26 miles. And that added flow in the river benefits the species in the river. It's colder temperatures and more flow. It also provides diversity to both cities, it gives you an option either groundwater, surface water, or a combination of both. It provides in lieu aquifer recharge, so the groundwater basin, if you continue to pump it year after year after year. The water levels continue to go down, that's a problem statewide. And this project will provide. Recharge of that groundwater basin, if you're if you're replacing how much you're pumping from the groundwater and and using surface water in its place. And that groundwater will have an opportunity to recover on its own, and it's been done successfully throughout the state. And then increases operational flexibility for what wells you want to operate, how much surface water you want to take at any given time of the year. And how you move that water around in your water distribution system. So this also supports the cooco goals of water supply reliability and ecosystem help, a lot of what I've already touched on, but most importantly, I think here. To point out is that in 2014, the state passed the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And it required regions to self govern themselves and solve the problem of groundwater overdraft. That, as I mentioned, is 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 pretty widespread throughout Central Valley for the most part. So if the locals can come together and deliver, make plans and deliver on projects that that solve that problem. Then the the state would then come forward with. Funds to help you achieve that goal. So so that that's a that's a big deal for this region. And Series and Turlock are doing what a lot of other valley cities have done. Is coming together with an irrigation district that has water rights. And purchasing a portion of those water rights, putting it through a water treatment plant and distributing it to your customers. So that you can reduce the amount of groundwater usage that you currently under. The project elements, if if you haven't been out to the site, highly encourage you to do that and. As the weather improves, we'll plan on having a public event out there at some point. Maybe for the ribbon cutting, but. We can always, we always invite tourists to come out, so if you're interested in coming out. We'd love to have you and show you around. But the water treatment plant is located just above Fox Grove Park on that bluff at the end of Aldrich Road. And the water is withdrawn from the river a little bit to the west, just west of the Gear Road Bridge. Crossing. Quality. And then there are pipelines, one that will deliver water to the city of Turlock. In the south and your pipeline that will deliver water westward. So on the project schedule, as I mentioned, 2015 was when the Joint Powers was really set and the cities of Series and Turlock. Really put the effort to move this project forward. So in 2016, I mean, right away, the planning started for the project. The first element of the project that needed to be done was to connect to the diversion. Or the intake that the Turlock Irrigation District had built back in the early 2000s. So that was the the first element of the project was to connect to those to that structure so that water could be drawn from the river. Lot of environmental planning, pre-designed, land acquisition permits, water rights, working with TID. Just a lot of effort went into this project from 2016. Up to 2019, when we started the the big effort to procure what we what we call procure or to contract. With a design build team to then put the design together for the water treatment plant and the pipelines. And then take that, lead that into construction. And construction really started in earnest in January of 2021. And I'm happy to say that about six to seven months from now, the water will be flowing to the cities. Project will be done and we'll be commissioning the new water treatment plant and starting the deliveries to the cities. Project capital costs, a little bit about the money and the facilities. There's a typo there, it should be 230 million, we just knocked $7 million off the project cost. Total project cost. And we awarded the design build contract in 2020 at 195.4 million dollars. So the difference between that number of that large project and the 237, that includes the wet well project that I mentioned. And it includes all of the planning and land acquisition and permits and fees and. And consultant costs and and all the contracts. So the project elements and the capacities of the first phase of the project is a 15 million gallon per day. Raw water pumping capacity out of the river, the river has capacity or the the intake has higher capacity than that, but we're only putting in. Pumping capacity to to meet the first phase. There's a pipeline that goes from the river up to the bluff. It takes that water for both the water treatment plant for the city's use. And it will also be used by the Turlock Irrigation District to move water from the river up to the series main canal. Currently, they convey all their water through the canal system. This will provide them an opportunity, and this is a reason why they built that intake back in the 2000s was for this purpose, to be able to buy. Get water further down the river and out and into the irrigation system. See, there's a 15 million gallon per day series finished water transmission pipeline, that's the ultimate capacity. But in the first phase, you'll be seeing about 5 million gallons per day. Turlock has a similar. Pipeline, a little bit larger, a little bit longer. And the 15 million gallon per day water treatment plant where the water will be treated and. Okay. Jump into the loan. So the project was financed through a state revolving fund loan, and that money comes through the state from the Environmental Protection Agency. Federal government. And the state administers that loan. So the the borrowed cost was about 185 million. Roughly 61.6% or million of that is for series. 123 million dollars for Turlock. It's roughly a two thirds, one third split between the cities. Turlock is taking 10 million gallons per day, series is taking 5 million gallons per day, 15 total. Estimated annual debt service on that is 2.5 million dollars per year for 30 years on that loan. And estimated approximate. Operations cost per year is about 1.7 million. And I believe the item that that started this presentation is is before you tonight to talk about. And I won't get into the operations contract, but that's the money that 1.7 million will go to to pay for that operations cost. Project cost reduction measures, so we were all about trying to find ways to reduce the cost of the project. So this loan that was secured through the state is at 1.2% interest rate. When the the project and the cities were raising water rates to fund the project. It was estimated at that time that bond financing would be used. And or percent. Interest rate was what was used to model that. So just in that difference in in borrowed cost is 100 million dollars in savings over the life of the loan. So very significant. There were a total of another slight typo, about 38 million dollars in grants secured for the project. And the design build project delivery that I mentioned earlier. Afforded us an opportunity to not only save time in construction, but also to save money. Because we have one entity designing and constructing the project, so. Current project cost is 1.192.8 million, we're down about 1.3% from the contracted price. Back in 2020. And currently, while is the end, at the end of the calendar year, we were at 83.2% complete on the project. So a few pictures here, the wet well and infiltration galleries, I mentioned those those pipes in the river, those were installed by TID. Turlock Irrigation District, and we built that box there on the on the bank. Back in 2019, that was completed. The wet well construction started in 2018, 50-foot deep excavation right adjacent to the river. Very challenging project, probably one of the most challenging. Construction projects I've ever been involved in in my 30 years of civil engineering. We actually had to freeze the ground to form a wall that would shore that hole to keep the water from coming in, so. Very, very challenging, and we had to, it had to be that way for a year while that the project was being built, so we had to go through a very warm summer. And as the ice, the ice wall was thawing and. Material was starting to to cave in, we were high enough out of the ground that we could just let it, we just turned the system off and just let it, the water, the groundwater come up against the structure, so. The timing was perfect, very challenging, very challenging. A lot of environmental constraints building that. We tested the infiltration gallery, we proved that it will meet its intended capacity, which was great news. That was one of the things going into this project is this, you know. Infiltration gallery was put in nearly 20 years before. Didn't know the condition of it, no way to, you know, test it, no way to inspect it. We just built it, put pumps pumps on it and tested it, and it worked perfectly. The water treatment plant, we purchased, SRWA purchased a 48-acre site from the Turlock Irrigation District. That will. Is large enough that we can build out all three phases of the project to 45 MGB. See, so a little bit about the treatment process, I won't go into detail, but water water treatment is about separating solids from liquids. Conditioning the water so that it can be filtered and then disinfecting it so that it's clean, clean to drink. But that's essentially what what we do there, I won't go into worry with the details. That's the process there. So your pipeline, 30-inch diameter, about five miles long. As I mentioned, it has capacity for the ultimate build out of 15 million gallons per day. It it's routed west from the water treatment plant along the series main canal. And Hatch Road to the series River Bluff Park. And the city on its own, through Sam and his group, is completing what we call a terminal facility, which is a a storage tank and a pump station. So the water from the water treatment plant will will flow into that tank. And then the city, your your operations will pump that water out to meet your demands. Water but water deliveries, as I mentioned, August of 23, we're going to start up the plant and water will slowly be introduced to the city. We wanted to introduce it slowly because. Your city's only ever seen groundwater, surface water is a little bit different, has different characteristics and qualities. So it's going to be introduced slowly, but your staff has done a a great job at getting prepared for this day. Doing a corrosion study, making sure that Flint, Michigan does not happen here in Series. Hydraulic modeling so that that water can be. Brought into the system, can be compatible from a pressure standpoint, so it can work its way out into the city. And replace the groundwater pumping that you do throughout the city. And then advanced outreach to customers, your customers need to know that this water is coming, they may notice a difference in the quality. I would say that it'll be an improvement to the quality that they see today. But want to let your customers know that this is happening. I think your staff is doing that through bill inserts and website and things like that. Public outreach, so we have a very, very nice website, if you haven't been there, stanrwa.com. You can get project information, monthly project updates, we have all of the the board meeting agendas and and minutes. All the technical documents behind the project can be found there. And then we have a lot of construction photos on a monthly basis, so it's, we update the website on a weekly basis. And there's a lot of great information there, you can track the project from from early on up to current time. Think with that, I will take any questions that you might have.
Go ahead, take this out to the public, is there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, do we have anybody on Zoom that with their hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, now bring this back to the council for any comments and questions. Councilmember.
Yeah, I had two questions. One was for you, sir, and I think the other one might be for staff, but the first was a. We'll we'll be getting around 15 million gallons per day, Turlock will be at 30, and that's just because of the length of the pipe, the distance, so they have a larger capacity because they have more pipe.
The the, so the project is being built in three phases, we're building phase one now, which is a 15 million gallon per day, so. Your pipeline is a little bit smaller because ultimately you'll take 15 million gallons, but not until the end of phase three. So phase one will be 5 million gallons per day, Turlock's first phase will be 10 million gallons per day. So their pipeline is a little bit larger, theirs is about seven miles long, yours is five miles long. That's how the the capacity works out.
Thank you. And my second question was the economic impact on our customers, well, you know, when will this be? Will this have a an effect on the bill, will this make this more affordable for our customers? You know, do you, I don't know if you have that figure, if you know that answer off the top of your head?
Yeah, I don't know the specifics, but I I do know that you you did a rate increase, I believe in 2018. And you spaced it out over five years, so you're in that last year of that rate increase. That fully funded the project, that was enough revenue that we cash funded the project early on. But when we awarded the construction project, you know, we needed 195 million dollars, so we had to borrow that money. And so the the debt service on that and the operations cost on an annual basis will be paid for through your water rates. And I don't know where your water rates are at this point in relation to the need to fund this project as well as other capital projects and. And operations costs that you have for your water system.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rosalinda?
All right, just a couple of things and a question, one was. I know you had mentioned the Flint water crisis, which was kind of the first thing that came to my head. I know you had mentioned the Flint water crisis, which was kind of the first thing that came to my head when I was reading about this. And I just want to make sure in the event that something happens, we're able to switch back easily. I guess would be one, and then also the demand during high times and during drought seasons, as well as what kind of effects can we, as even a resident myself, what kind of effects or quality changes should I suspect or prepare for, like am I?
Okay, so Flint, Michigan, I'd bring that up because everybody thinks about it. Whenever you talk about surface water, everybody can relate to that. That was a horrible event that happened in two thousand and fifteen. So the, and you asked, so how can we switch back? So you, you're going to continue to maintain your groundwater wells and groundwater system. And that, that's, that's what we call conjunctive use. It's a, you want to have both sources that you can rely on. You want to rely on the surface water when it's available. So you're getting your full allocation from TID. You want to maximize that use and minimize the groundwater use. But if the surface water is curtailed through drought, which can happen because it's stated in our contract with TID that that may happen in those instances, and you would rely more on groundwater in that, in that year to meet your demand. But ultimately, the groundwater basin benefits from that because you're, you're using more surface water than groundwater year after year. Let's see, you had three questions. I believe that the last one was about water quality changes. So as I mentioned, water will be have lower hardness, so it'll be softer water. It will be, I haven't, I don't drink your water, so I can't describe it, but surface water is very pleasing. It's very, I think you're going to see an improvement. And, all right, what was, you had a question in the middle of that, I recall.
I think that was the last thing. I was just kind of wondering about the effects. That was my last one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, council member Casey, you had a question, sir?
My, my question is surface water, will it require more cold chlorine? I know it's going to be better than groundwater, but it would have chlorine taste to it.
It's a, I suppose you will, well, you chlorinate today currently, so I don't think you'll see a change. I don't, there's no, we don't add more chlorine. We just add enough to be able to keep a residual in the pipeline from the treatment plant to your distribution system. And then you're, you have the ability to add chlorine in your distribution system as well if needed. But surface water treatment, you want to minimize the amount of chlorine that you use because you can form other, you know, compounds that we don't want to form. So we want to keep it as low as possible.
Okay, unless there's any additional, you have questions?
A couple of comments. So when I first became part of the SRWA board, first question I asked Bob, and I'd been asked that a lot, was how much water are we taking out of the Twelmy River? And with the way the water is nowadays, you know, is this a good idea? And Bob's answer was to that, which made total sense to me. He told me it's like taking a symbol out of a swimming pool every day. That's almost immeasurable compared to the amount of water that goes down that river. So felt a lot better with that. You guys may, some people may not know, I believe this is the biggest CIP project, capital improvement project in our city's history. And we are under budget and on time with this entire project. Bob, Jeremy DeMas, Karen, Sam, and all the staff have literally done an amazing job, along with all the previous councils, everybody that's been involved with this. It's amazing to look at a project of this size and think that we're almost at the end and we're under budget and on time. So it's an absolute congratulations to everybody that's ever been involved with this, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sam, is there anything that you need to add? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor or Council, right now, I think I want to move to the operation agreement for discussion item. I just want to summarize my input here. The City of Series and the City of Turlock are joined together by a joint power authority, Sanosas Regional Authority, which is known as SRWA. SRWA was formed many years ago with the intent of providing high-quality, affordable drinking water from the Twelmy River to the City of Series and the City of Turlock. So several operations. Several options have been brought to the group in regard to the operating SRWA in the most cost-effective manner. Over the last year or so, these have included either city taking their responsibility or our SRWA. After several, after several discussions and negotiations, SRWA board voted to approve moving forward with the City of Turlock staffing and operating the new plant. Before you tonight, the operation agreement is to fully staff and operate the new surface water supply at SRWA. So I'm open to a discussion.
So we'll bring this back to the council for any questions in regards to, or should I, I'll begin with the public, actually. Members of the public would like to add any questions or any comments. See, and none. Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, I'll bring back to the council. Council, do we have any questions in regard to the contract? Okay, Rosalinda, you can go ahead. Thank you.
Just a quick question. I think I already heard it, but I just want to reiterate, the cost of the employment or the maintenance is already incorporated in the current fees that are being charged on the utilities. There won't be an additional utility or charge. Thank you.
Council member Casey, did you have a question? Okay, and if there, you have a comment, a question?
Just a little of both. So the mayor and I serve on the SRWA board. Coming to this agreement is literally one of the most difficult things we've done since we started, since I started on the council in my days in the planning commission before. It was, it was an interesting time of going back and forth when sometimes we couldn't all agree, but eventually cooler heads prevailed and we were able to make this the best agreement we could for the City of Series. It didn't start out that way. I'm just going to tell you, it's too much to go into. But with just some creative, Nubia, thank you so much. She was amazing to help us get through this. It was just an incredible, crazy agreement. We all came to the same, to the same concept at the end, and that's what matters. It was a team. It's been a team since, for however many years, SRWA has been in place. And this was probably the most difficult thing of all of it. So that being said, we've approved twenty, twenty-three dash fifteen.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Yes.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much, council. Much appreciated. Moving on to resolution number twenty twenty-three sixteen, authorizing the city manager to execute the Measure L regional contract control project cooperative agreement with Sancog for the right-of-way support phase of SR ninety-nine Service Road Mitchell Road Interchange Project and approve a budget amendment. I believe this is Kevin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council members, I have another presentation. I hope I have the right file. Let's give it a try. Okay, it looks, looks good so far. All right, the Measure L Regional Control Project Co-op Agreement has actually been a long time in coming. It started with our contract with the design or the design engineer, and that was NV five back in two thousand and six. And this, this whole program is a result of a long-term effort to actually improve the congestion that the city is currently feeling in this service, service road interchange. And it's going to improve circulation as well as access to and from SR ninety-nine. The project is going to also include a unique diamond interchange at the service road juncture, as well as a partial interchange with the Mitchell Road. And that would include a north off-ramp and a southbound on-ramp. The project also includes extended deceleration lane in the northbound off-ramp to Mitchell Road, and extended acceleration lane in the southbound on-ramps from Mitchell Road and the service road. Auxiliary lanes between service road interchange and the four street ramps, replacement of the Mitchell Road undercrossing, and service road overcrossing structures and local road improvement. As I stated before, this thing kicked off back in two thousand and six. And the project has weathered several administrative changes over the years. Currently, resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one authorized NV five to proceed with the service Mitchell interchange plans and estimate contract to give us a ninety-five percent completion on our design documents. Last month, Union Pacific Railroad approved the thirty percent bridge design submission by NV five. And this marks a great milestone in our structural approval process. And since then, UPRR has requested that NV five submit a ninety percent design document for final structural review and approval. Next slide, please. Wait, can I go back? Yeah, the Measure L Regional Control Cooperative Cooperation Agreement between the City of Series is necessary to delineate the terms and conditions and requirements for receiving the right-of-way support funds from Sancog to continue moving forward with the interchange project. These funds will allow the retainment of an outside professional, what I call an ROW consultant or agent, who will initiate the preparation and setup to implement the right-of-way acquisition from the properties involved. The ROW acquisition phase will begin once the project receives NEPA approval from Caltrans, and this approval is anticipated this summer. Next slide. Total programmed Measure L funding is approximately eleven million dollars and is to be distributed as follows. Hundred and fifty thousand this fiscal year for the ROW support. Three point eight five million in twenty twenty-three, four million in twenty-four, twenty-five, and four million in twenty-five, twenty-six. City will use the hundred and fifty thousand this year for the ROW consultant, as I already spoke. The ROW consultant will be selected via public solicitation and will provide all the necessary work for appraisal, negotiations, and acquisitions of full or partial property rights for use on the SR ninety-nine Service Road Mitchell Road Interchange Project, including rights that are temporary, permanent, in fee or easement. Next slide, please. Additionally, it requires that the consultant provide project management and coordinate with all stakeholders, provide title and escrow services, determine types of appraisal, repair appraisals, meet with property owners, make offers, negotiate, and complete the acquisition, present results to the city council, provide relocation services if needed, and acquire final right-of-way certification through Caltrans. As part of this scope, the consultant shall closely work with Caltrans and appropriate regulatory agencies, the city management, the design team, and other stakeholders and individuals. In order to proceed and complete the hundred percent PSNE, the city will need the right-of-way phase to be completed and approved by Caltrans. Therefore, the approval of this resolution will allow the ROW acquisition to be initiated, as this phase could take up to twenty-four months to complete. This is in line with the estimated construction start date of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, with completion estimated in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and bring this out to the public. Is there any comments from the public? See, and none. Is there any hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
I bring this back to the city council for any comments and questions.
My question is the right-of-way that we're talking about, is all that in the City of Series or some of it in the unincorporated?
This is all in the City of Series, to my understanding. Yes, there are several pieces of property that are identified on the drawings that we need to actually acquire.
Caltrans is going to participate in the right-of-way or the city is going to handle the right-of-way solely?
I believe that the city is going to execute a contract with a private ROW consultant, and it will require Caltrans I would say support and cooperation. I don't think that they're going to be involved in the right-of-way acquisitions. I think that's our responsibility.
Any additional questions from the council? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Yes.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, thank you, Karen, from the finance department of Sancog for being here in case there was questions, but there was none. Thank you. Moving on to item number fifteen, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, approving the mid-year budget amendment for year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. That's the presentation. Ready?
Good, Mayor. What I have tonight is a, I'm presenting tonight is a brief update of the current year budget and an overview of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget calendar. So what we are presenting here is the current fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three general fund budget. Started with a beginning balance of six, six point eight six million. Projected revenues are at twenty-seven point one. If the budget amendment is approved tonight, then expected or projected expenses are twenty-seven point two, leaving a projected fund balance of six point seven million dollars, which is equivalent to twenty-four point eight percent reserves. It is council's policy that reserves do not differ eighteen. Currently, revenues are tracking slightly higher than last year. Of course, that is, that is mostly due to the increase in the price of goods. As of December thirty-first, which is fifty percent of the year, general fund revenues received equal thirty-six percent of the budgeted revenues. A large, our largest revenues, sales taxes and property taxes are not usually received. We don't have fifty percent of those yet in property taxes. We get the biggest chunk in January, and sales tax is always two months behind. And we are working with our sales tax consultants to determine the effect of the new developments on our revenue streams. As of December thirty-first, general fund expenditures are equal forty-four point four percent of our budget. So this slide is just an expenditure summary of the general fund budget by department. The first column is our adopted current year budget, twenty-seven million for the general fund, and we are currently at ten million, ten point seven million expended year-to-date. The resolution that you have includes these mid-year budget adjustments by fund. For the general fund, we're requesting to add ninety-three million, ninety-three thousand dollars, sorry. And then the other funds listed below for the total adjustment of one point eight million to the entire budget. And then this slide is our five-year projection that we do every year. The yellow highlighted column is the current projected budget. Again, it lists the beginning balance, the estimated revenues and expenditures. And at the very bottom is our percentage of reserves. So it also details out a couple of years forecasted. And, and we seem to be in a, in a good position, but like I, like I mentioned earlier, we are working with our sales tax consultants to see exactly or try to determine what effect the new developments will have on our revenue stream. And finally, this is our budget calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. We will be starting our budget activity in February, where the departments will compile their budgets, will meet with the city manager, we will summarize everything, bring it to council at a workshop, and then fine-tune it and hopefully bring it for adoption on June twelfth. So to end, we are recommending that council approve the resolution approving the mid-year budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four. And I'm available for questions.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and bring this back to the public. Is there any comments from the public or questions? See, is there any comments from Zoom? Is there any hands raised at all?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, now we bring this back to the council. Is there any comments and questions from the city council? Councilmember Casey, go ahead, sir.
Sure. The emergency services, is that the payment to the Desto City Fire Protection?
Yes, most of that is for the contract with City of Modesto. And we do have some costs that we still incur for the fire services.
Sure. So every month, when we approve the expenditures for the previous month, the expenditures for Modesto Fire, five hundred thousand. So you're showing two point five million. I'm asking, it should be for three months. What am I missing?
Well, it could be that December's payment, we haven't made it yet. Because we'll get the invoice at the end of the month. We will pay that in January.
I'm sorry. The payment that we made to the City of Modesto.
Right, right. So the invoice for December, we will receive in January.
It was still six months of payment, and six times five is three million.
Right. So at the time that I took the expenditures from our financial system, we probably hadn't made the December payment yet.
Okay.
Any other council members have any questions?
I had a question. On the general funds expenditure summary by department, there's nothing for information technologies. Didn't we just hire an IT person as a permanent city employee?
Yes, but IT does not come out of the general fund, and this is just general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Vice Mayor?
Not a question, more of a comment. Rosalind, are you gonna make any comments, or I'll just move from this comment to a motion?
Well, my only comment is, I thought we were gonna try to have the budget sooner than last in the time card, the time sheet. Right in June. We're gonna have stocks before that.
Yes, we are starting the budget process earlier this year. We'll be kicking off, as indicated on the schedule, with the departments entering their budget information early in February. We'll be meeting at the staff level to review those budgets. And again, we are looking at having a goal-setting session with the council in March. And I'm looking here at the schedule. Jump in, Letitia, here if I'm not seeing what we're.
It's the to be determined in sometime in May for the budget workshop.
Right, so they're down in the May timeframe, a budget workshop with the council that gives us, I think, sufficient time to work through any budget issues we might have. I think the key is starting the process earlier with the departments, so we can work through any of those budget challenges we might have early in the process. So I would hope to have those issues worked out prior to us coming before you as the council.
So if you were to look at where we were at the end of last year and basically bailing ourselves out with ARPA funds and looking where we are now, roughly hundred or so thousand dollars in deficit, which we can likely probably make up in the next several months. And if you realize, if you think about it, that's what almost none of the revenue from any of our new development. So we are in a much better place than we were even a year ago. So that credit to Letitia, all of her staff, all the department heads for getting that eraser out and pencil and whittling it down. And I'm much more comfortable where we are now than where we were this time last year. So congratulations to all of you for doing that great work. With that being said, I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on to discussion items.
Mr. Mayor, if I might make one clarifying comment. We did, the budget outlook does look much more positive than it did last year. My only thought would be that we'll continue to need to be cautious as we move forward. These are budget estimates, and we all know the world is dynamic and fluid. But these budget estimates do include revenues from some of that new development. So we have plugged that into this model. But again, at least I think our approach at the staff level will be conservative, and we want to make sure we set the city up for long-term fiscal stability. So, but again, good work to the finance crew, and we are in a little better position than we were last year. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
No worries. Moving on, discussion remote participation by elected and appointed officials in public meetings under AB two four four nine, NUBIA.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is more of an informational item to discuss with the council and provide information to the public generally as well. This is something we discussed briefly last year, but I thought this was a time to bring it back to you, because there's been several changes in state law regarding remote meetings, hybrid meetings, and participation by elected and appointed officials. So again, it's more for background and then for discussion if the council wants to make changes, and you'll see what I mean in a minute. So I want to start off with just the basic information of what the Brown Act requires under state law. The default, what we will call the original rules of the Brown Act, require that the legislative body and appointed bodies of any public agency meet in person. The majority of that body have to meet in person in a designated area. In this case, it would be city hall, city council, it's the hall planning commission. This applies to your commissions and committees as well. There is an exception under the Brown Act that allows for teleconferencing. So this was what we'll call the original teleconferencing rules. Under the original rules, if a member of the legislative body wished to participate remotely, meaning usually, well, called back in the old days, frankly, pre-pandemic, pre-COVID nineteen days, the default was to teleconference in by phone. In order to do so, the individual would essentially have to hold a remote meeting wherever they were located physically. So whether that was at their home, a different location, they would have to post an agenda at that location, open that location up for a public meeting, allow for public comment, allow for members of the public to engage with them at that location. And so as you can see from a practical standpoint, it provided challenges for elected and appointed officials to participate remotely under the old rules. But those were the rules, and they still are the rules under the Brown Act. You fast forward to twenty twenty, when things changed drastically. The governor issued a series of executive orders to make changes to how public meetings could take place and allowed for more flexibility due to people's concern in being in close quarters and close connection with other individuals. And so there was a little bit more flexibility put into place. Subsequent to that, the legislature passed AB three sixty-one, the governor signed it into law. And that's the bill that has allowed us to hold these hybrid meetings since it was, since the law was adopted. So what AB three sixty-one allows for is it codifies the governor's executive orders and allows for remote participation as long as you meet certain criteria. The criteria really is predicated off, you still need to provide access to the public. You have to pass periodic resolutions. If you will recall, we've had these on the agenda periodically, every thirty days, to make the finding that a pandemic exists, a state of emergency exists at the state level with a recommendation by local and regional officials for social distancing and those types of requirements. AB three sixty-one is based on there being a state of emergency. As of a few months ago, the governor has issued a statement that the state of emergency for COVID nineteen will be lifted at the end of February. And because unless that changes, there's no indication that that's going to change right now. The, one of the grounds by which the council could use AB three sixty-one is going away. So AB three sixty-one still is the law, but you need a pandemic-type situation in order to be able to rely on that. So what that means is that we're going back to, what else, as I mentioned, the old rules, the original rules for teleconferencing. To add another layer of complexity, the legislature has recently passed and the governor has signed into law, AB two four four nine, which I think is a response to the idea that there's been technological advances that necessitate there being some flexibility in how people participate in public sessions and public meetings such as these. So what AB two four four nine does is it grants the members of a legislative body, and again, this applies to both elected and appointed officials, but it grants the legislative body a few, what we'll call excused absences. Of course, for lack of a better term, it's excused absences as long as you meet certain criteria. And so that's information that we've provided in the staff report. AB two four four nine will allow up to a certain number of absences per year. You can't use the exceptions for more than twenty percent of the regular meetings that a body needs per year or more than a certain timeframe. And again, the reason why staff wanted to bring this to council is that to make the council aware that this is the new rule, staff will be, will have to track all this information moving forward to ensure that all of the requirements are met. So what are the basic rules? You still need at least a quorum of the legislative body to be present physically at the meeting. So what this means is you will, for example, you will still need three council members present at the dais in order to, for two of the council members to use AB two four four nine. You will not be able to all be physically absent. So that, the bottom line is, you still need a quorum in person. You can't, you can't have three or four of you absent and have one or two appear in person. The public is, will have the ability, must have the ability to attend remotely. So the rule goes, if a council member wants to appear remotely, the public needs to be allowed to appear remotely as well. So this is less of an issue because the direction that the council has given staff over the last several months is, and has approved budgetary, approved budgetary changes in order to upgrade the IT in chambers in order to make that accessibility better. So that's not an issue here. The member of the legislative body who is unable to attend in person must show just cause or provide for an emergency circumstance. So these are the only two categories that a council member can use to be excused properly. You know, an excuse of, I'm running late, I decided I just didn't want to go. Unfortunately, will not meet the requirement. So the statute actually provides for these two definitions. Just cause is only one of the following. A childcare or caregiving need that requires that that individual participate remotely. They must, the other category is a contagious disease that prevents that individual from attending in person or some related need to a physical or mental disability, or if they're traveling unofficial business. Those are the only circumstances that you can use just cause as a rationale for not being in person. Emergency circumstances, on the other hand, require a showing of a physical or family medical emergency that prevents the individual from being there in person. So you'd have to meet those criterias in order to use your excused absences. And in addition to that, similar to the other requirement I mentioned before, the remote attendance must be by both audio and visual technology, meaning that the goal of the law is if you're going to appear remotely, the public needs to be able to see and hear you. You can't hide behind the camera of, you know, just keeping the camera off. So there is that extra requirement. As of right now, this law is set to sunset. There's a period of sunsets with this law. So again, the idea is that the law is ever-changing in an attempt to try to match up with technological changes. But as of right now, this is what's in place as of January first, twenty twenty-three. So the implementation of it really is the important component because staff will have to track these absences and ensure that there's, that everything's being met in order to meet the letter of the law. One additional thing to note is important, that in the event that a council member desires to use the emergency exception, there will have to be a vote by the remaining council members to basically approve that appearance. So that is something that we'll be working with staff to make sure that it's incorporated into the agendas as appropriate. That's another thing, we mentioned this before at the last meeting. We'll be updating the rules and procedures for the council. So there'll be a section specifically about implementation of AB two four four nine, because there are a lot of rules associated with this new law. The other, the other component is, again, the important thing is that the public have access as well. At the same time that the council moves forward with implementation of this bill, the public needs to have the same amount of access. And so that's something that the staff's already begun implementing, so there shouldn't be any changes there. So again, the concept and the idea is more accessibility, provide some flexibility for elected officials. Now, the excused absences are simply that, they're excused absences. If a council member is unable to participate in a meeting because they're traveling or maybe they meet one of these circumstances, it doesn't mean you have to participate. It's optional. The council member can always choose to do one of several things if you are unable to be here physically. You can always opt for the original rules. As I mentioned before, the original rules are basically holding a mini-meeting wherever you are. But again, everything that entails, the requirements are significant as well. A council member may elect to document the emergency or just cause exception for why they can't be there at a meeting. But a council member may also opt to say, I just, I can't make it to the meeting. I don't necessarily have a reason to fall into this. I just can't make it. Maybe I'm traveling for some other unrelated issue, and I just, I'd rather just not participate. And that's always an option, too. So there's several routes that you can go. And as part of the implementation of this bill, we'll be working with staff to put together essentially a walkthrough, through different options, so that the council has any questions on how you can avail yourself of this new bill, we can do a step-by-step process. And again, the goal is to document it and make sure that we're complying to the letter of the law. The ramifications of not following the rules are also pretty stringent because it could, there could be a claim that it's a violation of the Brown Act, and there's a whole series of. And there's a whole series of code sections in the government code that relate to what do you do if you want to challenge a, a decision by a legislative body who doesn't follow the rules? So again, more rules to follow, but we need to make sure that we're being diligent and carrying that out. So again, the goal tonight was to present this to the council to answer any questions that you may have. We will be providing additional information for the council and the commissions on the implementation of this new law. But that it would be good opportunity to bring that in one of your early meetings in the new year to answer any questions. And I can answer any questions that council may have.
So we will have another opportunity to revise those several options that you're referring to. You said you're, you're going to bring us three different options?
No, those are generally the options that are available. Those are the options that are generally available. Now, there's, there is a possibility. This is something that has come up in other jurisdictions that say legislative bodies that say this rule is very complicated. We don't want to mess things up. It, it's too onerous on our staff. We basically would like to opt out of it and not even make it a possibility. And so that's something that we're evaluating as well. I will say though, in this case, because the council has already directed that the public have the ability to zoom in and participate remotely. Not allowing the council to do so or the planning commission to do so might be a little bit of a challenge. And we'd have to follow, follow through and figure out the parameters of what that would look like. If the council desires for staff to look further into that, we can, we can bring back other options. This was more of the global overview of what the new law will look like.
Also, is there any additional questions?
Yeah, I just have one clarification or question. I believe I know the answer. So if three or four of us here, we have a quorum and say I'm off somewhere else and I'm going to check in on Zoom, I, am I able to participate in the meeting just as if I was here?
If you can meet the just cause or the emergency.
Well, I can just take a night off, but still be on the, I cannot request one of those emergency things, just not be here or not be in person. If I log in on Zoom, so like was during the pandemic, am I able to actively participate in that meeting?
As a council member?
Yes.
No.
Only if I have one of those emergency?
That's correct, because
That is different.
It is completely different because AB three sixty one is the, the reason why you've been able to for the last year and a half to appear remotely for any reason, if you're just not here. AB three sixty one is going away because the pandemic declaration of emergencies being lifted at the end of February. So we're now left with the original rules of teleconferencing and AB two four four nine, which is the, the excused absences for basically health or family caregiving need.
So if I had a health issue but could be at home on, on Zoom in the meeting, I can't participate as council member?
That's correct. Unless, again, unless you can fall into one of those categories. And that's because AB three sixty one is tied to a pandemic.
So what, what if, for example, you post your location on Zoom? Is that going to be the same concept or is this, we're combining two things here?
That's, that's the old rule. So
But not Zoom.
You can always, you can always use the old rule. You can always use it. It's always available. It's just if you can, again, the requirements are, are pretty, are, are hefty in the sense that if under the old rules, we have to know with advance notice to include an agenda at your location. So for a regular meeting, that's seventy-two hours. For a special meeting, that's twenty-four hours. We post the address on the agenda. We have to allow for the public to be at that location as well.
Just before my thought goes away. So if we were to stay with the old rule, and let's just say somebody was not available. Say I was not here, the vice mayor could step in and run the meeting. I wouldn't be, that wouldn't be susceptible to any of these new items, correct? And go back to the old rule.
If you wanted to participate under the
I wasn't available to participate in the old rule.
So if, if, so let's use this as a hypothetical. One of you is unable to attend a meeting or let's say you're going on a family vacation. You don't meet the just cause exception or the emergency exception, but you'd like to participate remotely because you're somewhere where you have good wifi. You, 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 you don't mind opening up your location to the public, for example. We could go under the old rules to notice the meeting and allow you to participate under the old rules.
So you can use either.
So you can use either.
Then should we choose to not adopt these rules? And then should we choose to not allow public participation through Zoom? That would, would be able to go back to the old rules or how would that affect staff?
You, that, that would be a drastic change, but there, there are jurisdictions that have that are in the process of considering what that would look like. Essentially, let's go back to the old days of no remote participation for anyone. If you want to participate, you have to be here or else you can't participate at all. That is, that is a line of thought that some jurisdictions are considering. But again, from a practical standpoint, you'd be essentially unraveling everything that city has progressed towards allowing. Your council may consider that. And we'd, we'd need more time to figure out the parameters of what that could look like. So it's not impossible, but it would be a challenge as well.
And then one last question. If council member did meet the requirements to allow them to, to miss a meeting, it has to be voted on by the other four members if they're allowed to participate?
Only if it's for an emergency circumstance. If it's just cause, then no. Practically speaking, it's, it's very much on the honor system, right? That you're declaring, I can't make it to the meeting, but I would like to participate, but I'm sick. Or I'm having to, I have childcare issues and I can't be there in person. So again, the law allows for it. The decision to allow that missing council member to participate in that manner is only for the emergency exceptions though. And so that, that's the physical or family medical emergency that prevents that individual from attending in person.
The old rules suck. But you could use both the new and the old. If you just had to participate, but you're not going to be here and it's not an emergency, you can post an agenda and you're off. So that part of it.
There are ways. There, there are ways to participate under the old rules. As the vice mayor said, they are, they're challenging requirements, but yes, there, there is a possibility. And then, and now again, we consider these freebies. We consider them excused absences, but you just have to meet certain criteria. And we may got to make sure that we're documenting it properly to make sure that it all complies with, with the statute.
Okay, so there's no flexibility for a council member who just cannot attend, are you telling me?
To attend remotely? You can, under the old rules, under the old rule.
Would take away Zoom, right? Or no?
No, no, no. I'll give you, I'll give you the classic example because I've, I've seen this happen numerous times. Under the old rules, there's a council member who's away at a conference, but really wants to participate on an upcoming agenda because there's very important items. They give staff enough notice, hey, I'm going to be out of town. I would like to participate. What can we do? Under the old rules, it's, remote participation is fine. As long as the agenda goes out with the seventy-two hour notice requirement, listing the specific location and where that council member is going to conduct the meeting. You're, you're essentially conducting a remote meeting wherever you are. We have to post the agenda. Agenda has to be posted at that location as well. There has to be a notation of making sure that wherever that council member is, they're opening it up for public comment. It, it's a lot, it's, it's a step-by-step process that we'd have to walk through, but it's, it is possible and it has happened. And, and again, that's the old rules. And those old rules will still apply and can still apply.
Oh yeah, I can see that. I just want to make sure there's flexibility.
There is. So there, there is flexibility. Again, it's just the requirements are stringent. And under the new law, you have, you have a, a couple of freebies, a few freebies.
We can stick with the old rule and then or my, just my computer?
The old rule is still there.
Still there.
Or we're just adding
The new rules.
This new layer.
These things that I wrote down here.
Yes, yes. So the direction that we're, we're, the staff is seeking from the council really is if you wish for us to explore the possibility of not allowing AB two four four nine, we'd have to look at undoing a lot of things that the city's already moved forward on. But more, this was more informational for the council and for the public to know what, what it was going, what applies now.
No direction, there's no direction or motions today, right? No action required to?
No required action unless the council would like to give staff direction to explore alternatives.
Absolutely, give them, let them explore because
We, we need more information for sure. We didn't want
Rules alone.
Perfectly. I mean, it's, you've done a great job today, but
So what
Play all the scenarios out, I guess.
What we could do is as a follow-up item, maybe provide a, a chart of sorts that kind of, it will lay out for the council what it looks like under the original rules, what it looks like adding these, these new AB two four four nine considerations. And then an alternative of excluding two four four nine and what that would look like, basically where it's no remote participation for the council or for the public.
Right.
That's something that we can put together for the council.
Or that we should, or with council, like that idea? Unsure council says that is the direction.
We can open it up for public comment and then
Open up for public comment, see if the public has any suggestions or comments. Be it none, there is one hand raised.
Mr. Eekley, you can unmute your mic.
Yes. I can see my name, but I can't see the council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I can't see you guys. I just want to make a comment on all this. The explanation that Nubia gave to you individuals and I, fantastic. I mean, I haven't heard a lot of explanations for that in the past, you know, absenteeism or whatever, you know? But, you know, I, from past councils, part of the thing is show up, you know, if you're sick, you're sick, you know, prove that you're sick or whatever. But I, Nubia did, went way beyond what anybody else has ever tried to explain something to the city council. And it just gets better every time. Nubia, in a couple of years, there's a position open. Might think about it. All right. Thank you again, Nubia.
Is there any more hands raised?
No, there are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Moving on to council referrals, any referrals, referrals from the council?
Mayor, if we can just back up, just back to the, to, to the last item to, I want to make sure that I understood the direction from the council. So what I'm hearing is that the council would like a follow-up item to lay out in a different way, the different options, just
The way you described.
And I, and I don't need a formal vote. I need a consensus and I think I got the direction. Thank you.
That's good. Once again, council member referrals, any referrals from the council? Moving on, what, you have a referral?
Oh yeah. So I already talked with the city manager, Alex, but I wanted to make a referral that we looked to getting the planning commission their own city emails so that they can keep planning issues separate from their personal emails. I know myself and the vice mayor who are both past planning commissioners did receive emails when it was a big item or something of importance to people. That way they would have a way to separate that and keep them themselves safe. That's my recommendation to staff.
Is that something that we can just, as long as the council is okay with it?
I'm great with it. I think hundred percent needed.
We, we can, we can move forward. We can move forward with that and just make that happen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, councilman. Appreciate that. Moving on to reports. Okay, moving on to reports. I would just like to report that I just came back from DC and just like my colleagues that were up in Sacramento. There was a lot of great opportunities to meet and with a lot of great people and bring back a lot of information for the city of Series when it comes down to grants and policies and different things that we can probably move forward with. I think those opportunities are great, especially when you, where you leave the city of Series and you see all the great things that other cities and other mayors are are dealing with. And it was the USA Mayors of Conference that I attended in DC. And I also believe that my colleagues also had a great opportunity as their first time in Sacramento. So those things are, are something that is, something that I've seen that is a great deal. And we will continue to have those type of conferences. So once again, it was a great conference and I was at the White House and I got to meet the president and also got to meet Mr. Sanders. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the privilege of attending and staff people, chamber of Congress, annual recognizing people and council I'd also like to comment on, one of my pet peeves has always been communication. And, you know, I was given a very detailed report by our city manager. How we tried to communicate with the citizens, particularly about Samara Park. And we did a lot of things, it's still not working. Somehow or another, we need to ignite the concern of our citizens so that they can come, come or at least zoom in and understand what's going on. Instead of about reading it after the fact and the street courier and the, and all of that. Somehow or another, we need, we still need to improve. I had the answer I'd give it to. I don't, I know that we did, we did mailings. We, we do the social page. Don't need to communicate with our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other reports? Rosalind, go right ahead.
It's a little longer. I'm gonna jump on what Jim was just, or Mr. Casey, council member Casey was saying about the Samara Park. It was very last minute. I luckily had the morning freeze. I came in right after Mr. Warren had left. And we had very little, and I started going out in the hallways and as the parents were walking by, I'm like, hey, do you have a second? Can you help me out about the park? And that actually helped. A lot of them weren't aware of it. So I'm thinking that may be something I'm going to be doing again in the future. But just kind of recap the week. I've been working with the economic director, Tamara, who's been amazing and tons of help to try to bring a job fair to Series, probably April, May, June, or juggling some dates here. We may be able to collaborate with some other agencies. I do have some meetings this week to kind of, about a possible job fair that's coming up into Series. The week of, and last week of April, I believe. So I'm working, I've been meeting this week to try to collaborate a little bit more information. Tomorrow's the first day of the Spanish Business Workshop through San Sos Equity Partners in the city of Series for some hands-on learning permits, zoning and other stuff. It is Spanish-speaking. The space is limited. It is a free workshop and it's just kind of help people get started and off their kind of get them started in the right place. So they're not doing things they shouldn't be or the wrong way. Youth Commission, Alex and I met with Series trustee and Series superintendent this past week. I'm working on collaboration with the Youth Advisory Council, which is now probably going to be our youth commission. They're kind of doing the same thing. It is already started at the high school. It was also featured not too long ago in the Series Courier. So that's already there. I've already made contact with the principals or admin assistants of Argus, Central Valley and Series High School. As well as trustee, Lourdes Perez and the superintendent. So I hope to have some updates in the near future. And hopefully more information at the next meeting. And then lastly, Series Partners for Healthy Families, which is my last committee. We do have a meeting later this week. I believe it's Thursday from three to five. I had need to confirm my calendar. We're going to go over some information and kind of finalize some meeting times and stuff. And then this week, Mr. Martinez and I this last week went up to Sacramento. We had a lot of fun up there, a lot of great trainings and information, meeting with other council members throughout Northern California. We also went to the Capitol, kind of share some of our concerns with Assembly Member Ellen East and Senator Avrato Gill. So we look forward to collaborating with them a little bit more. And that's my report for the week.
Thank you, councilmembers. What a great report.
Yeah, I too was going to congratulate Daniel on being chosen for volunteer of the year in the city of Series. Also his employer, ICE Refrigeration for the Legacy Award, which just means you've been in business like three thousand years. And then Deputy Chief Mike Borges was selected for as Citizen of the Year in Series, well deserved. There was three or four other rewards, awards that I can't recall offhand, but congratulations to them. It was, it was a wonderful evening.
You know, it's unfortunate I sit in the fourth slot because I feel like you guys all covered everything perfectly. Um, thank you. Yeah, I did win volunteer of the year. That was an awesome award. Uh, very appreciative of it. Uh, and like Ms. Veer and Mayor Lopez said, we did spend the week in Sacramento ourselves and city manager Alex was with us as well. Uh, tremendous wealth of knowledge. It was so beneficial to be up there. I'm very appreciative of that. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to mention is that Wednesday, February first from six to eight PM, CYB is having their next in-person registration. I believe it's here in this room. So that's the next stage of in-person registration for youth baseball. So that's it.
And with that, this meeting is now adjourned. God bless everyone. Wait a second. Chance, my apologies. Thank you very much. Every once in a while. Thank you for coming.